Well, to find a seat or good place to stand. First order of business is about the hearing for JBCC, but we'll have a roll call first. Mr. Goodman?
Here.
Mrs. Reed?
Here.
Mrs. Murphy?
Here.
Mrs. Price?
Here.
Mr. What's your name now?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, okay. And Mrs. Wells?
Here.
And I'm Mr. Carney. Let's see here.
Okay, so we would go ahead and open the hearing and then invite anybody for patron input regarding this hearing. So, regular patron input will come later in the agenda. This is the time for patron input specifically on JBCC.
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve policy JBCC enrollment of non-resident students.
Second?
The other John.
We've got a motion by Mrs. Wells and second by Mr. Goodman to approve the policy JBCC. All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like seven zero. Okay.
Okay, so Mr. Carney, my recommendation would be to adjourn the hearing and then open our call to order the regular December board meeting.
So moved. So adjourned. So we're going to the regular meeting? We don't have to do the roll call again, have we? Well, we have to call roll. Is everybody still here, was here just a minute ago?
Here.
Looked like it. Okay, we'll move on then. With the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District mission statement?
Sorry. Lacking a page, my apologies.
To prepare students for success in every classroom, every day.
Yep, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, four, four, schedule of patron input. Who we have first? Mr. Price?
Thank you, Board. Well, here we are again focused on addressing the concerns of a minority who want to protect kids from things like rainbows, pronouns, and literature rather than addressing the real dangers facing our students, things like fentanyl and bullying. This from a minority that seemingly equates anything referencing sexuality or gender with pornography. This from a minority whose agenda was widely rejected by the voters last month, making this last-minute push that much more egregious. In debating what is or isn't pornographic last month, one of our board members tried to clarify obscenity by using what is known in legal circles as the Miller Test, which notes that obscene materials, one, depict sexual conduct, and two, are designed to appeal to the prurient interests of the reader. That board member, however, left out the third and very important part of the test, and that is whether the work, when taken as a whole, lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. The example often used here, "The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian," doesn't meet that test's definition of obscene. You may find its short description of masturbation offensive, but the passage doesn't depict the act, and its purpose isn't to excite the reader. In reality, the book shows young readers that the weird things that they think and feel and do are a normal part of adolescence. Its half-page on masturbation doesn't negate the value of its brutal honesty about major issues teens face, like racism, poverty, child abuse, alcoholism, and death. How it was presented in class is worthy of debate, but the value of the book is well-established. More importantly, no one that has spoken out against this policy is arguing for allowing pornography in our schools. But our children don't need sledgehammer policies that eliminate Penthouse's nudity, which is already barred from our school library, but also National Geographic and Michelangelo's David. This poorly-written policy would ban not just Diary of a Part-Time Indian, but the Diary of Anne Frank, and that has already happened in this country. Our kids deserve surgical nuanced policies that weigh the value of content against any discomfort that it may bring, just as the courts have suggested with the Miller Test. That discernment is what our trained professionals currently apply and what our current policies enforce. You should reject any policy that strips all students of their court-recognized right to access age-appropriate material. Respecting parent and student rights means protecting the books you agree with...
Fifteen seconds.
...means protecting the books you agree with and those that you do not with equal fervor. Thank you.
Mrs. Bond here? Brandy Bond? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. My name is Brandy Bond. I reside on High Street in Leavenworth. I am a parent to a high school sophomore. I'm here tonight as a parent to talk about two things. First, I am completely appalled at the way some members of this board treated one of our teachers at the special board meeting last month. To see a board member raise their voice, talk down, and consistently talk over a teacher who was asked to give you information showed me, as a parent, how you really feel about teachers. It showed me that if you don't like what a teacher has to say, that if their beliefs don't align with yours, then their words mean nothing to you, and you'll just act like a petulant child and throw a fit so that no one else can hear them speak. As a constituent and a parent active in my child's education, I will not stand by and accept your poor treatment of our teachers. I expect you to do better. Secondly, I want to address board policy IF. I find it very interesting that in the spring, once certain board members saw the backlash that the first edits to this policy would create, they pulled it only to bring it back as a hail mary before their time on the board is up. Very sneaky to try and push your political agendas at the last minute. Board policy IF as itself needs no changes. Should the current collection development procedure be added into it? Absolutely. Having those procedures in place and having the panel that you are currently using in place is only going to make our collections in each school library stronger. My student, along with every other student in our district, deserves to have a library that is full of diversity and representation. Every student in every grade level deserves access to books that represent them, especially our students of color and our LGBTQ+ students. To say that the board is divided on this policy is an understatement. It is clear that some board members have a political and/or personal agenda, while others are thinking of all of our students. If you, as a parent, don't like a book that your child has checked out, it is your right as their parent to prevent them from checking that, from not checking that book out. However, it is not your right to prevent my child from checking it out. Your proposed changes are so restrictive, I don't think you realize the harm removing these books will create. You will essentially be erasing those students. You're telling those students that they don't matter. You're telling those families that their kids don't deserve to be treated equally. Books should allow students to see themselves, but also learn about people and groups that are different from them. Removing these books removes those learning opportunities. You wonder why great teachers are leaving our district. It's time to look introspectively and see that the board is causing the problems, not fixing them. Removing books that represent all students is not what's best for kids and does not prepare every student for success in every classroom, every day.
We need to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
We've got a motion to adopt the agenda by Mrs. Wells, second by Mrs. Murphy. Is that correct? All in favor? Seven zero. Recognition. Is anybody here for recognition? Any back there anywhere? So we'll start off with the... Where's the first sergeant?
Well, I really don't need this, but it's been...
I was told you it was gonna be three hours.
I know, three hours, sir. This is for you.
Good luck.
I'm just kidding, because I'm gonna let these, these, these students are the reason why they're national champions. It's been 36 days since these kids have won their fourth national title, and I told you last year we'd be back, and we're back. Now, I'm gonna leave, uh, uh, coach. Where are you going?
All right, I didn't know there'd be a speech, but hey, thank you to the community. Thank you to the school for all the support that you provide these kids. I'll tell you what, there's really, there's nothing inherently exceptional about these kids, other than the fact that they put in an exceptional amount of work. They have the self-discipline to come out every single day, volunteer to get their butts kicked around the course, and they keep coming back day after day, and they put every ounce of effort into every moment of practice, and that's what sets them apart from their competition. Anybody in the country, any of these schools that come out and compete against us could do the same thing if they had that same amount of work ethic and self-discipline that these kids have. So I think that speaks just tremendously about their character and where they're gonna go in life, that they are able to put forth a dedication. So, well, very well deserved.
You're the commander.
I just wanna say, as Coach Edwards said, thank you again to the community and our teachers and our schools. We really would not be able to do this without you guys, and thankfully, our teachers are very understanding of when we are gone for a whole week, and they give us that grace period, and, yeah. And I'm also very proud of our Raider team this year. I think we came back from a lot of adversities, you know, getting moved from, you know, Melina to Fort Knox to Melina again, and then finally Fort Knox. So, and overcoming as all of those changes occurred. So, very proud of you guys.
There's a lot of people in our community who wear the Leavenworth Raider shirt, and the reason that shirt is the same for both our competitors and the people, the parents, the community members who buy it is because everyone who wears it contributes just as much to us winning. So if you've ever worn the Raider shirt, thank you.
See you next year.
For the picture, though. Raiders, are you fired up?
What?
First Sergeant.
They've been training. Now, they're in the sport, they're basketball players, there's crossfitters, there's... They're involved in everything.
Exactly. So, Raiders, are you fired up?
(Applause). Thank you. I'll thank you soon. Thank you very much. Uh, thank you. Okay, we can go, Raiders.
Come on up, Brian. Brian, make sure that mic works for you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, standing before you tonight is Brian Harrod, our current exec director of technology. He has been an invaluable contributor to Leavenworth USC 453 and specifically the Technology Department since 1995. And before that, he is a proud alumnus of Leavenworth High School. For the last 28 years, he has provided steadfast leadership to our technology team and has been both flexible as well as actively pivoted during a number of milestone moments as our teaching and learning environment has evolved from a technical perspective over the years. So, Mr. Harrod, we salute your service to this district and appreciate that you will stay connected to us as you adjust to a very active and well-deserved retirement phase of your life. Mr. Harrod, thank you for your service to USC.
Once you're actually retired, now you gonna bring back some fresh eggs like you used to?
Soon as we get some more chickens going.
All right. Item number six, building report.
Mr. Carney, we have one more recognition.
Oh, we do? What is it?
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that Delaware or Cherokee? Leavenworth Main Street? Debbie, Debbie? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
So, I'd like to call the podium as executive director, Mrs. Debbie Dear.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I really want to say thank you to Dr. Adams and to the school board for the school district's continuing annual investment in our Main Street Bucs program. So, it's such an awesome thing that you do for your employees. We gave out 630 packets this year, so I'm assuming that's how many employees you have. And it's just great for them to show what their value is to your district. It's great for our business community. We already have thousands of those dollars that have started coming into, back into our office from the merchants. They, they're so excited every year. They gear up for this, and, you know, they're ready, and they're, they're, bring them in like so often, every day. That's like our full-time job right now. But it's just great that you believe in our community and that you want to put that money back into it, and so for that, we are very, very grateful. And so, live, love, local. Thank you.
Okay, back to item six. Stephanie, are you ready?
Well, I will tell you, it's always hard to go after the rest of the recognition, so maybe we can look at that in the order of lineup, because it's hard to top all that. Thank you for everyone for coming tonight. I am Stephanie Born. I am the principal at Earl Lawson Early Education Center, and tonight with me, I have Amanda Hall, who is the new assistant principal for Earl Lawson Early Education So, several years ago, when we first started the Early Education Center, we kind of founded or opened things with these five pillars, and I've talked to you about them every year since I've been here. And those pillars are best literacy practices, play-based learning, service learning, inclusion and co-teaching, and then building those community relationship stakeholder partnerships. However, last year, we really wanted to focus on our chronic absenteeism. As you know, because you mentioned it earlier tonight, our data has not really shown the highest numbers when it comes to chronic absenteeism. So in 2021, 2022, when we first started tracking this data and when the Early Education Center first opened, that year, we had 71.4% of our students were considered chronically absent. That is just a subgroup of kindergarten, so when you're talking about 250 kindergartners, 71% of them were chronically absent, which is a lot. So we really decided we had to look at that and figure out how to get kids at school more often. So last year, with our newest data, we had a chronic absenteeism rate of 54.6%, which was a decrease of 16.8%. I would love to take all the credit for that, however, Lawson has the absolute most phenomenal teachers I have ever worked with. Our counselor has kind of been leading the charge on our chronic absenteeism data, and she's done a phenomenal job of making sure that all of our teachers know what the data is, we understand and know who the kiddos are who are chronically absent, so we can constantly be reaching out to those families and asking, "How can we help? What can we do?" Not in a shaming way, not in a way to say, "Hey, where are your kids here?", but a way to say, "We want to partner with you. How can we help get your kiddo here more often?" One of the things that we noticed was that for a majority of our kiddos and our staff, illness is what hits us hardest at the Early Education Center. So, of the 47%, which is what we're currently at this year in '23, '24 for chronic absenteeism, 67% of those kids are due to absences for illness. So we knew we had to do something proactive to teach kids. So, this amazing lady right here is Nurse Debbie. Nurse Debbie has gone in at the end of last year and the beginning of this year, and she's gone into every single one of our classrooms to do hand-washing lessons. Sounds something that's really simple, but just by adding that in, we were able to decrease 6% from our illnesses just from last year to the beginning of this year. So we're starting to see that trend hopefully continue to go down, but we're seeing great things so far, and we're super excited about it. So I wanted to start by talking about what are play-based practices? Because Lawson is pretty much a play-based center. So play-based practices are, is that learning approach that places play at the center of a child's experience. It allows them to be in charge of their learning. They're actively engaged in hands-on cooperative learning. It teaches them to think critically. It teaches them to really look at social skills in a way that they're not able to do in your set-and-get lecture-type traditional environment. One of the misconceptions that we hear all the time with play-based is, well, isn't a teacher just watching them play and they're just babysitting? That is the complete opposite of what play-based education is. We are able to hit every single Kansas standard every single year in a play-based approach. So our standards have not gone away. We teach writing, we teach math, we teach arithmetic. All of those things come in what we're doing. We're just doing it in a more engaging environment through our play-based approach. One of the other common misconceptions is that it's not rigorous enough, that the kid is playing, we're not able to teach those skills. I didn't show you academic data tonight because I know that you're gonna get it from Ryan, but what I can tell you is in the last three years that our school's been open, we have had some of the highest academic achievements and gains that we have seen in the district in a long time. Once again, I would love to take the credit, but we have the most phenomenal teachers at Lawson who have worked and dedicated everything these last three years to making this a success for Leavenworth kids. One of the other misconceptions is that there's no rules in play-based centers. We don't know how to walk in the hallways or sit down. And one of the things I challenge you to is, community, you guys have been there, come see it. I will walk you through, and we can look at it together. Kids, I promise you know how to sit in desks. We just don't have desks. Kids, I promise you know how to walk in lines. It just looks different because we don't have a traditional classroom. It's more of that play-based approach. Amanda is going to hand out some information for you guys. In this information, it has not only some facts and statistics over what play-based is, but it has a little packet on how do you help community members or families when talking about play-based? So when it comes to those misconceptions that I know that you guys hear about play-based, I want you to be able to be educated and know what is play-based? What are those misconceptions? And how can we talk to our community in a way where they understand that it's not just playing? It's purposeful. It's targeted. We look at standards, and that's what we're teaching to our kids. This guy in the middle right here is the Commissioner of Kansas. The Commissioner of Kansas is a strong believer in play-based education, and he recently said, "We need to move to developmentally appropriate practices so students can grow to use their imaginations, use play to learn how to work well with others, and grow socially and emotionally." So this is the Commissioner of Kansas, who is also bought into the play-based practices. So here are some examples of our spaces that you would see. On the first, where you... I'll point there. So that was what a traditional kindergarten classroom used to look like before we remodeled, and you can tell that it is very teacher-oriented. It is made up to teacher spaces, not a lot of room for any extra supplies for the kids to have to play with. So then if you look over to the other side, we now have space for the kids to play, interact with each other. It's all student-centered supplies and materials in our rooms. You can see up at the top, they have a little cozy little spot there where they can read, calm down, be ready to go for the day. Then you have a teacher working at a small table. The tables are all right, you can write on them, so they're dry erase, very interactive, and can get down at their level and work right there with them. And then just a kid down at the bottom just looking at a book, getting ready for his next So as you can see, while these spaces look a little different, they're meeting the students at the level that they are developmentally. All of this is developmentally appropriate for those youngest kiddos coming into our schools. So the first pillar we're gonna talk about is literacy and play-based learning. So this is one of the things that we are founded on. This top right-hand or left-hand picture, this looks like just blocks with some kids, right? Well, we are able to take this a step further. This can be summarizing a story with pictures of themselves. This could be lining their friends up from tallest to shortest. This could be teaching classifying skills or teaching lots of different skills just in blocks. This section right here, or this picture right here, is one of our teachers who is teaching a recipe. In our pre-K classes, we have 52 recipes who are funded through the Education Foundation, so thank you, Education Foundation, for funding all of the amazing food for our kiddos, because 52 recipes does get really expensive. But just in cooking with kids, you're able to teach math skills, you're able to teach communication skills, you're able to teach writing skills. So while this looks like something that's simple play, the amount of standards that we're able to teach in just this lesson is astronomical. And in fact, we're doing it in a way that's more engaging than just a simple worksheet. These kids love coming to school every day because of the experiences that they're able to get through play-based. Some of these other pictures, we do a lot with songs. We do a lot with fishing for letters. This is a really cool, it is a painting strip, but it actually dries, and once it dries, it goes back to white, and then they can repaint again, so it's reusable, which is nice for our school. And then this right here is another way that our nurse was able to get into some of our classrooms and teach just nutritional, healthy, basic lessons. So we try to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to get into our classrooms and kind of teach kids that next step and really have... and kind of teach kids that next step and really how to, you know, how to be a whole child learner.
So our next pillar is service learning. And this year, we have continued on with our partnership with Uncover KC to help give back to the community. So you can see under September, our pre-K students made dog toys for the local shelters. And they enjoyed that. They have little squeakers in them. And they talk about the empathy and giving back to the shelter and their community. And then for December, here is an example. We have a grocery store study going on right now in kindergarten. And they are making tote bags to give back to the local mission and so, uh, community stores. So they get to decorate them, and then they'll come and collect them and give them back.
Family engagement was one of our pillars. I put on some of our family engagement events from last year because it was kind of one of those wiggle rooms where I hadn't gotten to see you. And then we did the family engagement. So this is from last semester. However, we are gearing up to do it again. So as Ms. Hall had just mentioned, we had a six-week grocery store unit. And we wanted to find a way or create a night in which we could do a family engagement event that wasn't at the school. Sometimes one of the things that we've seen is some of our parents who maybe didn't have the best experiences in school, it's hard to get them to come in for family engagement nights because it automatically has that negative connotation based upon their past. So we wanted to meet them in the community and somewhere that was comfortable for them. So we went to the grocery store. We talked with the kids and we taught them six weeks of skills circled around the grocery store. And then our amazing teaching and learning department went out to Dylan's and they mapped out the entire store. And then as the kids came in, they got a map. And they went around to different sections of the store where there was a grocery cart and activities all centered around literacy for the children to do with their families. One of the best things about this was not only did our teachers get to show off with our students what they had learned, but our teachers got an opportunity to teach parents how to ask those higher-order questions. And then they said, you know what, parents? Now you try. Now you practice. So not only were we having that fun, engaging activity in the grocery store at Dylan's, but we also had that opportunity to really talk to parents and help them help their kids educationally. And that was huge for us. On this right-hand side, this is what we did in pre-K. And so, once again, our amazing teaching and learning department came in and they took pictures of each one of our pre-K kiddos and they put them on the signs. So this is one of our pre-K kiddos from last year. They came to do a ABC scavenger hunt on the playground. And as they were doing that, they focused on their letter names and letter sounds. So you can see this one is a kangaroo jump. And so you say, "K-k-k-kay." And then they trace a K in the air. And then they say, "Crazy kangaroos jump carefully across the canyon." So just that fun activity that they could do with their parents to reinforce skills, but in the guided, watchful help with instructors who are there if parents have questions. Or maybe they don't know that a C can make, you know, or a K and a C can make the same sound. So just those simple things that we were able to help parents with along the way. The last one is building community resources and stakeholder... Or the second-to-last one is building community stakeholders and partnerships. So we obviously partnered up with Dylan's. Dylan's was fabulous to partner up with. They were very willing to give up one of their busiest nights of shopping, but we were also there at one of the peak times for shopping. But they worked amazing with our kindergartners. We also have down here, we are really trying to increase our volunteers in our classrooms with our parents. So really giving them opportunities to come in as much as, you know, we can to have them do activities with us, tie-dye shirts, do some of those family service learning engagements, but at the school with us. We have... This is our third year continuing our partnership with Pioneer Partners. So every year, we kind of get a nice donation of things that Pioneer Partners has collected for us. Once again, this is our third year, so we're very, very grateful for Annalise Murphy. And then last year, we partnered up with several in the community so our kids could afford to go to the field trip without cost on any of the parents. So we were thankful to several of the restaurants in the community of Leavenworth who were able to make that happen for us. We also believe in bringing in experts in the field and talking about those things that we're learning about. And so we were very fortunate that Dr. Adams got to come as an expert in sports. So he came and he talked to our kindergartners about his sports career and got to be the expert in that area for them. And then this last little guy over here, we are currently looking at how we can partner up with the high school, where our kindergartners are going to be making some cute little pictures. And then our high school fax class is going to be helping to sew their creatures or their drawings. So we're excited about that partnership with the high school as well. All right, last pillar is inclusion and co-teaching. And I know that I've talked to you guys before about these communication boards, but we took it a step farther this year. And we asked for an additional foundation grant for these communication key-ring holders. And so what they are is they're laners that go around a student's neck. And so it gives them immediate ways to communicate on that com board right there on their person. So it's not having to walk over to one of the gross motor communication devices or relying on a technology device which may not be charged or may not whatever. They now have a communication device that they can wear around their neck. We're printing these out with the school's badge printers. So we're using resources that we already have. But we got some extra funding for some ink and things like that. So it's been really cool. This picture down here is an adaptive vest. So we have several kiddos in our school right now who are blind. They're visually impaired. And they want to participate in play just as much as everyone else. The hard part for them, though, is when they have toys that fall, they can't see. So they fall to the ground. So what we've done is we have Velcroed their toys and we've created these vests where now if they're playing at the table, just like every other kid, they have a toy that falls. The Velcro vest is going to catch the toy. They're going to be able to find it. And they're no longer getting frustrated because their toys fallen to the floor. And then this fine bunch of people is our multidisciplinary team. So this is an amazing bunch who collaborates together. It is our occupational therapist, our speech-language pathologist, our physical therapist, and then the district's special education PE teacher. And they come over once a month, every month, and they work together to do lessons in every pre-K class so that every single pre-K student has an initial screening from a related service provider. So no longer do we have to kind of wait for observations from teachers of, oh, little Amanda is kind of struggling with her language. We need to get her screened. Our kids are automatically getting screened once a month, every month by an OT, SLP, and PT. Which kind of brings us to our last slide. So throughout this journey, we have shared our experience with a lot of people. We've done numerous statewide presentations. Some of these have been at the Kansas Principals Association. We just got home last week from the Kinders Can Conference in Hutchinson, Kansas, the Kansas Division of Early Childhood, along with lots of other conferences that we've been asked to present at. So far to date, we have given 37 tours from people all across the country. So from Texas to Alabama, people from all across the country are coming here to see what Leavenworth has built for their kids and what you guys have provided us with the bond. And not only that, but the state is on board with what we're doing. And the state recognizes the work, the amazing work that our teachers have done and the hard work that they've done. And for both the year 2022 and 2023, our district was awarded a Kansas Star for Kindergarten Readiness. There are not a lot of people in the state of Kansas who have gotten this award. There has been no one who has gotten above a bronze star yet. So we are hoping that we will be one of the first. So Lawson, with our community support, thank you to you guys, the bond initiative that we had several years ago, are ahead of a trend in the state. And now other districts are following suit. As of today, we know of three separate school districts who are creating their own bonds to create early education centers that mimic and mirror what we're doing here in Leavenworth. So once again, we're first in all we do. We were first in this as well. So some next steps for us. There is going to be later tonight a vote for the new calendar. So one of the things that we know we have to do, kind of going back in, is if the calendar gets voted on for a traditional calendar, we got to go back and look at our curriculum. Because if you remember the first time I came and talked to you, I said that our curriculum wasn't mirrored or lined up. It needed to be with... And then the second thing that we're really going to focus on next year is that transition to first grade. We know it's hard. Every time you transition from a building to building, it's difficult. So we are working with the elementary school principals to bring their first-grade teams over to us so they can see what it looks like. And we can start to help them with questions they have of ways that maybe they can mirror those things in their classrooms as well. So that's all I have for you guys tonight. What questions do you have for us?
By moving the family engagement to Dylan's, did you see an increase or a decrease in family participation?
So it was hard to tell because it was a rainy night. And we were already... On both of our family engagement nights, they're raining nights. So our attendance was a little bit lower than we would have liked. But what I saw is we had families that I had never seen in the school before. So maybe not our attendance was higher, but we got a whole subgroup that hadn't come to family engagement at our school before.
Sounds like a good question. Thank you.
So you were talking about you have some sight-impaired students.
Yeah.
I know you have some hearing-impaired students. Scarlett comes home all the time showing me the new sign language that we work, so we talk sometimes. Do you have enough ADA-compliant play equipment for those challenges?
Yep. So I do know that when the bond happened, and I believe it was about $1 million that was paid for just for the playground alone, it was made sure that it was ADA-compliant. Everything was in our classrooms. Matt comes over frequently and we do checks and walkthroughs. And he makes sure that everything that we have in the hallway, that maybe we need to clean up down the hallway, is ADA-compliant. So we work with Matt really closely.
Do you have a need for maybe, where you have like the interactive boards and everything else, which is, you know, more for a visual person? Do you require any additional braille tiles or things like that to go into the school?
So Dr. Rattleberger has been really phenomenal about buying any kind of assistive technology that we need. We currently have several kiddos who have tech devices. We have several kiddos who are using lamp, which is all iPad-based. So any of those things, we're very fortunate in the fact that we just put in the request to the special education department and they get us what we need.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
When did you start the monthly evaluation integration process with the Sped team? Is that this year, last year, year before, first year you started?
So it was the first year we started. We kind of started dabbling into it. And then last year, when I spoke to you guys before, we had seen, which I can't relay it all back to this, but we had already seen six kids drop from speech-language IEPs. For those of you who know statistics, statistically, less than 3% of children will ever get off of an IEP in their entire educational career. Last year alone, we were able to drop six kids from speech IEPs. I attribute that to our inclusive classrooms. So maybe not always just the multidisciplinary team that's screening it and catching it fast, but just the fact that we have kids of all ranges and abilities all in a classroom together who are learning from each other. So we no longer have all of our kiddos who are speech-language impaired group up together, hoping that somehow they figure out language when there's no models. Now we have tons of models.
With that said, though, when you integrated this, did you see more identification of students in the past that might have passed through and have been a number of years before they were identified?
So I think what we've seen is more students who we've now been able to help through tiered processes. So before, we might have had this kiddo screened. We might have said, yep, okay, let's go ahead and get them identified. Now we're able to see, okay, this little kiddo is struggling. Let's see what things we can put into place. Let's talk to our SLPs. Let's work with our student intervention team and see what kind of supports we can give them before we go straight to an evaluation process. Because especially when you're talking about kids this age, to look at being two standard deviations below the average is super hard when you talk about things like environment, right? These kids have never been to school before. So it's really hard to gauge what's a true special education need and what's lack of exposure.
I just want to thank all of you for this process because it was one of the targets I know when we first started in utilizing the environment you created with every student, you know, in pre-K and K coming to you to be able to do the early identification and the intervention. So, you know, thanks, Dr. Rattleberger, and your team, and thank you guys. I mean, that's a huge thing.
Yeah. Well, like I said, we wouldn't be able to do it without the support of you guys. Everything that we've done, you guys have helped to vote on. So thank you. And please, when you get a chance to see the Lawson staff, please make sure that you thank them. They work incredibly, incredibly hard, and they're, hands down, one of the best staff I have ever worked with.
I know you give good building tours, and I've had a couple of them. So thank you for doing that.
Yes. And like I said, anytime, come on out. My information is on those cards. So if you guys have questions after this or you want to come see it, same thing, open to the community. I give community tours all the time. So don't think just because your kid's not going there, you don't get an opportunity to see it. Just call us. I'd love to give you a tour.
Just one other real quick question. You said you were working with the first-grade teachers to help integrate some of what you're already doing at Lawson into their classrooms. Are you also integrating some of that more rigorous still-time from first grade at the end of the year of kindergarten so that they are mentally ready that way as well?
So we're going to be looking at all aspects with those first-grade principals. So we're going to start with the principals. We're going to... We've already had lots of talks this year about what it looks like there, what it should look like at Lawson. We're going to start with them and see where are those areas that we can help with. And if that is an area that they say, this is something that we can really look at, we can collaborate together, then that's the way we're going to move. But we want to give an opportunity for them to get in, for them to see it, so that way we can have those good conversations on how we're going to help each other.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure.
When we had the transition to the intermediate center,
Yeah.
and that was one of the questions, how do we transition to both that cycling of students, et cetera? With your discussion so far with the principals, are you guys considering taking your kindergartens over to a first-grade classroom and do that kind of a walkthrough like we've done with them? Do you see any value in that?
Like with our first-grade students?
Yeah, the ones that are going in over there.
Yeah. So they did a transition night last year. I do know from the elementary principals, they thought that was extremely successful for them because those kindergartners did get a chance to go over there and meet those first-grade teachers. And then when they started school, there was a ton of them that remembered, hey, I know you from that transition night. So I do think that we've already started down that path and it's been successful. I just think that there are so many more things that we can do to work together to make it even more successful for those first graders going in.
Thank you.
Yeah.
When we did the bond and we built Lawson, knowing that it was going to be a play-based center, you gave all kinds of education to us as to why that was a great move for the district. And it was my understanding that we would be moving that way. Like in kindergarten and pre-K, they're learning these skills. They're going to take that way and style of learning with them as they grow. And I understood that our elementaries were going to change and evolve as well. And so I'm almost fearful that what we're having is Lawson is staying play-based as it should, but we're not changing and evolving in the elementaries to accommodate the new style of learning that the kids are doing. And we need to, as a district, look at that and make sure that we are communicating better so that we're not just saying, you have to now sit down and learn instead of learn how we know is better by playing. We really need to look at that and make sure that we're doing what we set out to do. So...
So I...
It's that's conversations we all need to have together as a district.
Yeah.
Like, I think...
When I think of some of that, I'll take some responsibility on myself for some of that. One of the things that we talk to our teachers all the time is if we're going to preach this to people, we need to be out, the ones out there, selling it to everyone. And I don't know if I've done a good enough job of making sure that our first-grade teachers understand really what play-based is. And that's why I wanted to, you know, make sure that you guys were informed tonight with what it is, what the misperceptions are about it, and then what we can do to help transition that gap. Because I too would like to see some good collaboration. Because I too would like to see some good collaboration and transition into first grade.
It shouldn't be Lawson against the other buildings. We should all be cohesive in our learning. Because the students are the ones that will ultimately gain.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number seven, the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seven.
We got a motion to approve the consent agenda by Mrs. Wells, second by Mrs. Price, own favor. Seven, zero. We're late, back here somewhere.
See if we'll be able to move on to nine.
Nine, nine. Come on, Batman.
Good evening, I'm coming before you tonight to buy a new Batwing mower. Batwing mower is a large area mower. It's about 14 feet wide, it gets pulled behind one of our tractors, so I'll answer any questions.
I know we like Purple Wave these days, but have we ever considered looking at other public agencies in the area that might wanna buy them from us and might be benefit?
Most of the public agencies that I deal with, the city, county, they just buy brand new. They don't wanna buy somebody else's worn-out piece of equipment. And ours will have anywhere between 85 and 9,500 hours on it. And we're starting to see some parts break down. We lost it for a month this summer, just trying to get parts.
How old is it?
It's nine years old.
Yeah.
Is it necessary, do you need it?
Yeah. When we were down for a month, we had four mowers out, our two zero turns and our two stand-ons, eight hours a day, five days a week, and they just barely kept up.
Okay. So a lot more equipment was needed in order to replace the?
Well, I could've used two more zero-turn mowers to try to keep up, and two more people, and then so on and so forth.
So nine years, what the life expectancy is of?
No, usually it's about six to seven.
Oh, yeah.
But we, our mechanic does a pretty good job of keeping it up, keeping it greased, all that good fun stuff.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the Land Pride AFM 4214 All Flex Batwing mower from permanent equipment on the Source Oak cooperative for $20,990.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Wells, second by three, to purchase the Batwing mower, own favor. Seven, zero. What's the next thing? Oh, the boiler? Boiler, yeah. Consideration of Boiler at Anthony Elementary.
Good evening. So I bring to you tonight a consideration for a new boiler for Anthony Elementary School. Twice a year, we have contractors come in and do inspections on our mechanical systems to make sure that they're ready for the heating season or the cooling season, depending on the equipment. The summer, we did identify that one of our three boilers that are located at Anthony had a cracked heat exchanger, that being a major portion of that unit, and the fact that that product is no longer available. We are looking at a replacement. We did put this out to five bidders using engineer drawings from Henderson Engineering, who was the original engineering company for that remodel back in '09. And they were able to draw plans for us to take out to bid. So we sent it out to five bidders, three of them came through, did a bid walk, made themselves familiar with the location, and submitted. And you will see a big discrepancy between the pricing, and that's probably gonna be one of your first questions. I can assume that we have a low price this evening from Helm Mechanical, primarily because I think they are a new vendor trying to establish their presence with us. Design Mechanical has been a mechanical company we've used for over 20 years. They just completed a boiler installation over at Lenworth High School and did a fantastic job. North Point also has done work with us in the past, and they were just a little bit higher, so specific reasons why, I'm just assuming. But tonight, before you, just a.
Clarification, when that renovation was done in 2009, were all boilers replaced, or just the one?
All three were replaced.
Okay.
And they were relocated to the basement.
Okay. And typical lifespan on those boilers is how long?
Typically, it's 20-plus. We're sitting on the originals from Warren, which are now 23 years old. So pace to do our PMs on it, we just happened to get one that maybe experienced a little bit of a material defect or something like that.
Okay, thank you.
And what's their manufacturer warranty on it, when they're installing it?
You know, I don't have that in front of me. I would assume, I think the mechanicals are usually three-year.
Three years.
Installation's usually a year. So it's like your installation is one year, mechanical parts are three. So, and, yeah.
And primarily, you're the one that does the repairs if one breaks that's past that kind of warranty?
My team will do minor repairs, pretty much the PM-related things where we can replace parts. When we get into the actual, the boiler chambers, we have to have a mechanical company who has certification to do that. So we don't have any issues. And then we also do get inspections every year as well, not only by our insurance company, but in the boiler through Kansas State Fire and Marshal.
Thank you for that clarification.
So is there any concern that you have with this being a newer company, not going with the company that we've already used before?
Good question. I have visited with several people who have used this company, and they said they do good work. They came recommended well. So we'd like to try them out to see, see if we can get another mechanical company within our group. It's nice to have two or three to be able to invite to bid. Unfortunately, the other two didn't show up interested in participating.
Was there a difference in the boiler that they were going to provide, or was it basically the same boiler?
So it was specked as a Fulton 750, EXE 750. So the basis of designing was the same boiler. If they had a substitution, they were to name that. I believe everybody did the same boiler. Another consideration there is each mechanical company may get different pricing from the same distributor, because there's like one representative of that Fulton. So they may give different pricing to different companies based off of relationships or, you know, type of work that they do.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Helm Group boiler, $42,302.
Second. So you'll do that?
We got a motion by Mrs. Murphy, second by Mr. Goodman, to purchase the boiler. Is that the old Fulton guy that built the steamships too, same company?
I am not aware. I'll have to do some research to get that.
Well, let's have a vote.
Second.
Own favor? Looks like seven, zero. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, Matt.
Item 10, book challenge, level three.
All right, item 10 is a 48 to 9 with regard to a level-three decision related to three book challenges. So a little bit of background and context, these three books were challenged back originally in August. They have made their way through level one, which is a building-level decision, level two, which is the superintendent's decision, and then level three, which now puts it before a review committee. So the decision tonight would be to effectively authorize the review committee to move forward with their work as stated in Policy IF. We have gone through the review committee stipulations and are making recommendations for each of the five categories for a total of six people across the district and community.
Could I ask a question? How were the community members chosen?
Sure, good question. We looked for members that are currently part of the district or building-level BLTs.
And the reason why I'm asking, the last time we had a committee that was done to even look at some of those policies, the district had put out a plea to the community to see who all was interested in being on that committee, and then they drew from a hat, so that there would be very random, very diversified, and have a good pool of all kinds of ideas, rather than just one or two type of ideas. So that's why I was kinda curious on how that was targeted.
Yep, and if you look at Policy IF, I am not able to find any clearly-cut recommendations on how those are selected.
And ours was just, the committee that we had was just, it was Dr. Roeth's idea.
Sure.
And it was to be able to discuss and get the input from community members, educators and things while they, we've been going through this for however long we've been going through this. And they just have felt that it was more fair to at least announce to the community that there was the opportunity that they could participate in that.
Sure.
And that, and then Mr. Potter sat on video and videotaped drawing the names from the hats for the, I can't remember if it was five members, but one had to drop because of an injury.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's why I was kind of, that's why I was kinda curious on how these were chosen, because it's not random, and it's not necessarily like open up besides just real quick, hey, are you interested in doing this?
Right. And interestingly enough, we have, what, 12? It was a larger number of.
We had 12 to 15 people that had applied.
And back to your point though, since we don't have a procedure or protocol for that, if we did have the request of the community and there were volunteers, maybe those volunteers could be a standing group that we could draw from, that would be randomly chosen if they chose to, I mean, so it's not kinda ad hoc every time we do it. Sure.
And also, at this point, it appears like the system pulling from the system, instead of it being more unrelated, especially in the community member section. So I don't, I currently don't support the suggestion of the individuals.
Okay, so I would need some direction from you, because until the review committee is established, you will not be able to move forward with level three.
Oh, thank you.
As I say, I think part of the reason why we went to the district slash building site council was in the interest of time, since we started in August. We've already been placed them, we do now, they'll give us support in January, next quarter. Delay, just see that much longer. So I think that was probably part of the reason why they were.
How are the individuals on the building site council selected?
Volunteers.
Volunteers, same thing for the district site council, it's who's interested.
So if you currently have more people interested that are on there, who decides who gets on the committee?
On this committee?
Like for building site council, district site council, how does that currently work?
So any, it's my understanding that anybody within the community is able to join any building site council, as well as the district site council, it's open to?
So there's no cap on?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anybody we've turned away, I guess, to your question, so. But for this committee, I looked for one from a building, one from a district.
Then, all due respect, we can say just timeframe of doing this, but we've been working on this for well over 18 months with the committee that was formed the summer of 2022. I kinda thought we would've taken a lead as how that was being run, of going through this without spelling it out, but.
So I think in the future, not necessarily tonight, we need to come up as a board with clear guidelines as to how we want, what if and when it gets to level three, how we want that committee to be created. So I don't know if we need to do a work session for that, or what we need to do, but we need to set policies so that Dr. Adams is not having to guess at our intentions, so that it's clearly defined as to who we want to have that done. But as of right now, we have 30 days to complete this process according to our policy to do this, so I think that we should go forward with this for now, and then if we wanna schedule to do another special meeting, I'm down for that. I have some suggestions as well.
So who selected the community member individuals this time?
I did.
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, because of time-wise, to go ahead and prove this as it is right now for this one, and that I strongly agree with Mrs. Wells that we need to sit down and write out the guidance that we want to be done on house elections.
And I would absolutely invite that as well, so thank you.
Thank you.
We had a motion by Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mrs. Price, own favor. Six, one. Next is Policy IF.
So before we move on, can we either set a special session or at least talk about creating the review process for the future?
Right now?
Yeah.
Why not?
Would you guys like to do that before the next board meeting, or after the next board meeting, or?
Not before the next board.
Not before, we got too much with the holidays.
I agree with the holidays as well. So is there any time in January that looks good for you guys to have a special session? And can we set it at like, as of right now, that's the only thing we need to do unless, is there anything with the strategic plan that we would need to add into, or anything like that that you can think of that we need to be added on to, a special session to talk about?
Right. I will offer one suggestion to think about. So you're, in the next item, gonna be discussing Policy IF?
Okay.
Which is the policy that you're gonna use in 10, right?
Correct.
And to be clear, the review process will be as IF stands today, so I just wanted to clarify that. But while you are considering amending and/or adoption of an amended IF, you could address this issue, this structural issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
So then you could avoid the work session?
Okay.
And provide more clarity for my team on how the review committee is established. Am I making sense? Hopefully that, okay.
Because I honestly don't see it taking so long that we need to have a one- or two-hour study session to sit there and say, hey, let's just put out a plea. We have 20 days for the plea. We get the names, we sit down with Jake and do the video or whatever, draw the names with the committee members.
So, thank you, Mrs. Wells, I just wanted to find some efficiencies if we could, so.
So what was the recommendation?
Yeah, so my recommendation would be, while you're addressing any and all items related to IF in 11, that you could amend that specific piece and add more clarity to the review committee process. Yep. So I was clear on the positions, building principal, media specialist, right? Like, that one was clear. What I was not clear on is how we then selected that person or those people within that category, if that makes sense.
So, but that can be done at any time. We can amend policy as we so desire.
Right.
Mr. President, I'd like to hand the floor for a minute.
Good.
Based upon the fact that there's no changes outside of what we just described to this policy, and is now administratively corrected for the flaw that was present at the last board meeting, I would move that we vote on IF. I don't wanna kick the can down and make another new board have to take responsibility for what we have created, what, you know, those of us are still. So I move that we make it a second read tonight, because there's been no change from the last time it was a second read, and vote on it tonight.
Well, we're, what I understood Dr. Adams to say was that we need clarification, or he, as our superintendent, needs clarification in the review process within itself stated in this policy. So we need to come up with language that clearly defines how he is to get the community information.
Right. Again, we could change the policy at any time, any portions of the policy. So my question is, I guess it fails for a second, there's no second.
I will second.
We got a motion by, what's your motion again, Mike?
That we make this a second read tonight instead of a first read, because there were no changes.
Okay.
And take the vote tonight.
Okay, we got a motion by Mr. Powell, second by Mrs. Reed, to take action on the IF policy. Want to vote?
Yeah.
Own favor? All against? Four, three, four. Okay.
So now it becomes a second read, so we.
So now it becomes a second read, so we have to vote on the policy.
You going to make a motion?
Well, generally there's discussion. I mean, I don't know whether there's a discussion here, I'm just honoring the protocol.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, it was an action item.
But it was supposed to be a first read, that's why, so. Mr. President, I move that we accept IF policy as written to amend it later for the change in the review process.
I second.
Got a motion by Mr. Powell to vote on the IF and amend it later, that I heard?
For the changes that were, that were initiated tonight.
Oh, okay. So we had motion by Mr. Powell, seconded by Mrs. Reed, on favor? No, no. Four, three? Okay, motion passed. Next item, 12, parent bill of rights. Jake, you got this one?
Okay, yep, Mr. Potter, do we want to put it on the screen? Do we have anything? Yeah, thank you. As we understood it last month, you wanted more research related to the parent bill of rights and specifically those statutory links, whether that be federal, state, or otherwise. So many thanks, Mr. Potter, Mr. Hingula, and a couple other, other individuals that helped us. I believe, to my, best of my knowledge, we have answered your question. So, Mr. Potter, take it away.
So from the per tasking of the special meeting that we had two weeks ago, you now see a more complete document with links both to board policy and state law and federal law. And I would say that if it's the direction of this board, that this be posted somewhere on our website for reference. I think I have a deeper appreciation for how ever evolving school legislation is. So we will probably put a revised by date on it. And presumably after each legislative session, we might have new, either actions of this board, board policies that become current or active or change, and or certainly at the federal or state level. So what you see has been reviewed by Mr. Hingula and his team as well. And I think it's as comprehensive as we can get per the language that was presented by the board. None of the black font has been changed, only changes to this tasking were, were the specific related board policies, state law, federal law.
Thank you so much for your work on that.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the state law?
Well, depending on what the bullets are, some of them talk about student privacy, some of them talk about access to health records. And I'd say they're all under the envelope, umbrella of parent and guardian rights related to public school education. So each one has a applicable board policy, state law or federal law. Some of them have multiple, all of the above on some of the bullets as presented.
And then, sorry, one second, Mr. Siffer, would you show the breadcrumb trail of where this will be located, please?
So, Mr. Siffer, you can follow under district website, and we'd be looking under the tab.
Sorry, Mr. Goodman.
Families is where that would be as a dropdown. And as you can see, there's lots of things that we want to post and make available on our website. And if there's other places that we can put it or certainly reference it, at least they'd have a landing spot. And having gone through this exercise, I'll say it's very difficult to find. Search for a, any kind of law within the Kansas Legislature website. Can even be a little less burdensome, but even looking for board, board policies because there's so many unless you know what you're looking for. So at least this would represent a one stop shop. So if you're engaged with the community and people have questions, you can at least reference them, see somewhere specific.
But it'll leave a specific bullet on here.
Correct, there would be a specific tab, yep.
What are you going to title it?
I would want to refer to four votes and voices on this board right here. I would say parent guardian information, something like that.
I, I would agree with that. It should be something in the order of, hey, parents' rights and responsibilities, or something of that nature.
Parental legal resources within the district.
Parent guardian legal resources, we'll work with it, and if it needs to change, we'll absolutely make the change.
Thanks so much, Jake, really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, believe it or not, we have made it to the end of first semester. Halftime is just about a week and a half away. So personally, that's very, almost unbelievable for me because it has been a whirlwind. But I've thoroughly enjoyed learning much about the history of our school community and truly being surrounded by many people that have made me and my wife feel very welcome. So I want to thank our families for trusting us to the care of their children each day. I know that is not an easy task. And I've also had the opportunity to make many introductions throughout our school community. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of both my wife and I to all the students, staff, and patrons that I have met, as well as one individual that's not with us tonight, but he's been very instrumental, that's Mr. Dr. Roth. He has been fundamental in my onboarding. I just want to say thank you one more time for his leadership over the course of the last 10 years as he officially enters into retirement at the end of this month. You already saw the recognition for Brian Herrod as he joins Mike in retirement. And I know he'll miss his experience of our director. But he also played a key role with the young man standing right next to him that I'm looking forward to working with as we go through several leadership transitions here in the district. So thanks to Mr. Herrod for helping welcome Ryan Sifford as our next director of our technology department. We've got a lot of things to be thankful for, and I want to make sure we take some time to do that tonight. The first of all was a finalization and board approval of our strategic plan. That was huge. We've been through a lot of legwork on that, as you're all well aware of that. And I'm looking forward to bringing that into a regular and consistent focus starting in January. We did improve upon our chronic absenteeism trend data. It's still not where we want it to be, but we have made some significant improvements in that. And I really appreciate the work that's been done by staff and students on that. And this, I will tell you, is a very committed group of administrators and staff during what is a very challenging time in education. We have been through a number of leadership transitions. As I looked across the DLT today, I believe out of the 25, 26 people that are sitting there, half of them are at less than three years of experience as a leader in our district, right? So think about that for a minute, everything from building principals all the way through my position. Several people have less than that five year mark. We added 24 substitute teachers this year, which provided a good infusion of volunteers from our area churches and faith community. And finally, we continue to build upon recognition for students and staff to improve upon that very important piece of school culture, morale, and also modeling positive engagement. Shifting gears, I want to talk a little bit about an event coming up this Wednesday, it is the Magic of Music on Main Street. So the Christmas season of, as you know, is right around the corner. And to help us kick that off, our awesome and amazing education foundation will be hosting a free winter concert this Wednesday, December 13th at 6:30 PM. It will take place at the high school's Main Street and feature a cappella choir. Those invited guests should enter through the main or south doors by the flagpoles. As you saw earlier in the consent agenda was the 24-25 calendar, and I want to draw your attention to a couple pieces there. Our next step is to obviously design and distribute something that's user friendly. But I wanted to highlight two really important areas. That calendar has been streamlined. And so now all schools, including Earl Lawson Early, Early Learning Center, will operate on the same calendar across our district. The 24-25 calendar also eliminates early releases. And we want to make that clear that both of those adjustments were made based upon input that was shared directly from families and staff members through various channels. So again, we want to say thank you to those that provided input, both through the strategic plan, listening sessions, and otherwise. That input was directly fundamental in the decision that we recommended to you tonight. And finally, last but certainly not least, this month marks a really important and last meeting for two of our esteemed members, Mr. Goodman and Mr. Powell. I think it goes without saying that many do not appreciate the significant time and investment that is required to serve on a local school board. And I will tell you that also probably many do not appreciate the toll that is taken upon you personally as well as your family as you endure the responsibility to hear very divergent and often opposing viewpoints and attempt to make decisions that are in what's the best interest of students, families, and the community. But nonetheless, you have served and you have served faithfully, and I really have appreciated my short time working with both of you. So I trust that you both will continue to have your voices heard, and I hope that you both remain connected to the pioneer fabric. And again, I just want to say thank you, gentlemen, both for serving our community and serving it well. Thank you. It's very heavy.
Thank you, Paul.
Heavy. Gold bars.
Mr. Carney, that's all I have.
Okay.
Anyone want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to ask superintendent, there's a couple things, not to put you on the spot, but
Sure.
I know that this year we've taken a lot of initiatives, not just with trying to keep kids in school, but also to raise their scores because we know it's not just about keeping kids in school. It's trying to, you know, prepare them much better than we've been able to in the past. Could you talk a little bit to some of the initiatives that you and the staff, the teaching and learning staff have taken to address, like some of the things that, at the middle school?
Sure.
As well as after school programs and things, because I know that we're doing things that we didn't do before. So I just think it's worth bringing up at this point so people know the kind of effort you're putting in to get after raising, you know, our, our kids' educational.
Absolutely. I'll start first with the Richard Warren campus. We identified some structural concerns that we had. And so thank you to Mrs. Batson. She's done a solid, and I mean that, in the truest of form. We asked her to go over and help specifically at the seven, eight side so that we could provide more structure, specifically with regard to Mr. Kessler serving as the campus principal. He's now able to focus more specifically at the five, six side. And I will tell you the feedback that I have received, it has already been seen and felt by staff. So thank you again to Mrs. Batson for that. Secondly, I'll give a shout out also to Mr. Dediki as we restructured the physical bricks and mortar of the ISS room there at the Warren campus. And I will tell you that in my experience as a district administrator, typically capital projects don't go that fast and that effectively. He made it happen, and he, he made it happen very quickly. And so that was again a concern that we identified that he was able to put into motion very quickly. Second, or third, I guess, I'm struggling to keep track here, Mr. Potter and Mrs. Troyer helped me with what will be short of 20 listening sessions across the district in which we went out directly to buildings and heard directly from staff. And we are already developing a list of both short term as well as long term initiatives that are directly input, input received from staff. That was fundamental in helping me understand the working conditions and where we could make immediate improvements as well as where we could align those with long term improvements that will obviously clearly align directly with the strategic plan. Mr. Powell, you alluded to some after school restructuring as well. So Levi Lacy, who I don't think is in the room, he has been helping in that regard as well as helping at Warren. So we've got multiple people pulling multiple, that kind of double duty right now, right? And so.
They ought to be recognized, we ought to know what's going on.
Absolutely, and I'm sure I'm going to leave somebody out, so I'm, I'm always guilty of that. But there are several people with 70 plus openings that are doing more than one job right now to lift up the educational needs of this district. So thank you for allowing me a chance to do some of that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Along that lines, if I could, are there any policies that you've noticed that we need to be looking at, touching upon in the near future to help align with the conversations that you've had between our staff and administration regarding the new strategic plan and to help in the process?
I'm not going to say policies, where my focus is at right now is probably twofold. One is anything and everything related to recruitment and retention. So earlier this afternoon, I sat over there on that side of the room, and I am a firm believer that we need to recruit our own staff first, i.e. focus on retention. The more you retain, the less you have to recruit. But two is we absolutely have to fill this gap. As I just talked about, we have people pulling double duty, or we're just simply throwing more kids into less classrooms, you get the idea, right? I don't like the impacts that that is having on folks. And so I will tell you that our team is actively exploring what I call everything but the kitchen sink at this point because I think everything needs to be on the table. So staffing one, and right after that is student behavior. I believe that is directly affecting as well our working conditions and environment. So again, you're going to see some things that are going to be put in motion. In some cases, probably quicker than the strategic plan would otherwise allow. As I call it, the fork in the road, the short road or the long road, we're going to take the short road on a couple of these to put them into motion sooner. Thank you.
John, you have anything you want to say?
What you get?
Oh, come on, say something, John.
But I didn't know if we were saving these for board member comments or right now, but no, I, I'm grateful for this opportunity. Honor your service to the Board of Education, John Goodman. 2015. July 2015, I've been here a good eight years. I've loved every minute of it, most of it, not every minute of it. But I, I, I am grateful, I, I've accomplished the things that I wanted to accomplish for the most part. I, I got in for my kids. I wanted to make sure that they had a great education. And for the most part, I, I believe that every one of them has. My, my son's going to college now. My daughter is in, has her basic pick of, of a lot of universities, they're beating down our door. And my son, youngest son, is currently stressing over his math final. And, and in all cases, I, I feel like my kids, they, they got the best education they could get here and then some. And especially with all of the, the after school activities. You know, I, I say it every time, I'm, I'm always amazed at how much extra effort that all of our teachers put in for our kids above and beyond just putting in a day's work. So that was one of the things that, that continuously impresses me with that. So I'd like to thank everybody for, for this time, and, and I appreciate everything this board does.
Okay, shall we move on?
Mr. President, I move we go into executive session to discuss matters affecting a student pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, and that we return to open session in this room, how much time do you need? Yes.
Well, wait a minute, how much time you thinking, Amy? 10 minutes?
So.
I think we can wait, can't we? Do you need a bar? Yeah, I know.
In 10 minutes, so we will return to session in this room at 7:38. The board would like to invite Dr. Adams, Amy Sloan, and Robert Hingula into the meeting.
Second.
You got a motion to go into executive session by Mr. Wells, who seconded it? Mrs. Murphy, on favor, 7-0, let's move on. Because we only got 10 minutes.
Action after the last executive session for, for student to a hearing under the provisions of KSA 72-6114. The hearing officer recommended that a student be suspended for an extended term of November 9, 2023 through May 22, 2024. And whereas the student or the student's parents or legal guardians, if the student is under age 18, timely appealed the decision of the hearing officer to the board. And whereas an appeal hearing before a hearing officer appointed to the board was held on Wednesday, December 6, 2023. And whereas the hearing officer who heard the appeal submitted a written opinion containing findings of fact and conclusions in this matter and recommended the decision of the hearing officer be affirmed. Whereas the board chose, sorry, whereas the board has received no additional evidence in this matter, now therefore be resolved that the findings and conclusion of the appeal hearing officer be adopted by the board and that the extended term suspension or expulsion of the student in this matter be affirmed.
Check it.
Well, mostly, what's the motion?
What I just read, the resolution.
What's, what's the resolution?
Resolution 2324-017.
All right, so we have a motion for the resolution to be enacted and seconded by Mrs. Murphy. All in favor? Looks like 7-0.
Mr. President, I move we go into executive session for negotiations to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer, employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that we return an open session in this room in 10 minutes. The board would like to invite.
I told you we were going to take a bio.
Do we want a bio as well?
One person does.
I amend that, second to a five-minute bio.
I amend it to fifteen minutes, so I'm bad at math.
Seven fifty.
My kid is the genius, not me.
Okay.
Second, on the amended.
All in favor? Seven zero.
Executive session to discuss non-elected personnel pursuant to the exception under the Kansas Open Meetings Act, in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and that we return to open session in this room in twenty minutes at 8:20. The board would like to invite Dr. Adams, Amy Sloan, and Robert Hingula.
Second.
A motion for an executive session for said things, seconded by Mrs. Murphy, correct? All in favor? Seven zero.
To approve the staffing report as it was presented to us?
Second. Defer. Judy.
We have a motion to approve a staffing report by Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Goodman. I think you beat the wire.
Judy beat me by a mile.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to extend...
Wait a minute, we got to vote first. Should we vote? All in favor, staffing report? Seven zero. That's supposed to be.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to extend Dr. Adams' contract to the 2025-26 school year.
Second.
A motion to extend Dr. Roth's contract, 25-26 school year, by Mrs. Wells, seconded by Mrs. Price, correct? Home favor? Six one. Okay. So much for solidarity. Let's see, what we got next here? Where are we?
Meeting dates.
Yeah, run those dates by, will you?
All right. As we alluded to earlier, we are in what I describe as the two-minute drill heading into halftime. So your end of second quarter is right around the corner, December the 20th. Just a reminder that the 21st is a flex workday for staff, but there is no school. And so your winter break is effectively December the 22nd through January the 2nd. So happy holidays to everybody there. No school then, the first day back on the 3rd. Your next board meeting is the 8th, right here at 6:00 PM. We will honor Martin Luther King Junior Day with no school on the 15th. And then on January 31st, a half-day of school, half-day of PD. Your February board meeting is set for the 12th at 6:00 PM, and we will then also honor President's Day with no school on February the 19th.
Okay. Let me get my specs. We got some patron input, don't we? Three, four? I didn't, well, I got...
Oh, sorry. My apologies.
Yeah, it comes all together here. I guess these two, three.
Five.
Are you six? Six, 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 six.
Yeah.
Shall I read the names to make sure we got the right ones? Which one? Oh, there, what's this one?
These would have been the four.
He's, he's...
No, it would have been the four, correct?
I only got four right here.
Okay, so PJ Wells, Eric Price, Sharon Miller, and Matt Allen. Did we miss anybody? Randy Bond.
Randy, you're coming to get up?
My apologies.
Okay. I thought I saw it twice. That's why I was trying to put my glasses on. Okay.
Please, that works, that works.
Looks good to me. PJ, you're on.
Good evening. My name is PJ Wells, and I'm a junior at Leavenworth High School. As you can see, I did not come prepared to speak today, but I find it extremely disappointing as an AP-level student and a lifetime student of USD 453 how the IF policy was so easily voted on. I will only be focusing on what amendments have been made to the high school level tonight. By having these new regulations, you are actively silencing voices and people's stories. Some of the most educational and influential stories, narratives, and books I have read about could be deemed to have verbal recounts of sexually explicit content, such as a writer's personal experience with sexual abuse or assault, and how that impacted them as an individual and how they persevered. The school board and community is ignoring the overall messages that these books hold and what lessons they teach. I wouldn't be able to fully engage in my social studies and English curriculums, nor learn extremely valuable lessons of understanding and perseverance without the reading of these stories. As previously mentioned, you are ignoring the value that a book holds as a whole, instead of focusing on the one portion of the material that you yourself do not agree with. The board loves to preach the literacy of our students, but has just pushed out this policy that has the opportunity to ban books heavily used in AP and honors curriculum. I hope what just got added to this policy gets reamended when you open the policy again to keep your focus on all experiences and all learning opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Good evening again. I'm still Eric Price of the senior at Leavenworth High School. I am utterly appalled to see this board adopt policy IF tonight. You approved a policy that quite literally equates any reference to gender identity and sexual orientation with explicit sexual content. Tonight's result shows a complete disregard for what the majority of voters asked for this last election, and it removes the rights of all parents to exercise discretion in the education of their children in favor of a few. This policy is just a backhanded way to continue attacking members of the LGBTQ community and their allies by suggesting that no age is appropriate to recognize the very existence of a portion of our student body and society. You would do well to stay focused on student safety, well-being, and their educational outcomes, and this policy endangers all three. I hope the new board will quickly take action to rescind this policy next year. But in the meantime, don't be surprised when you get complaints about everything from Shakespeare to the Bible. As a book that some frequently choose to thump here says, "You reap what you sow." And those of you who have championed and cheered banning books, like one in which a teenage boy brags about masturbating, who then go down to the local polling place to happily vote for a grown man who bragged about grabbing women's genitalia, just know, we see your hypocrisy. The students see it. Everybody sees it. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Miller?
To our staff, faculty, enjoy, deserve a break. To our students and our families, safe holidays, safe travels. To Dr. Roth, again, we'd like to thank you for his last nine years of service to our district. We appreciate everything that he did, and we wish him the best in retirement. Let's see here. Our staff is tired, and we are overwhelmed. Yet for six months, four of you on this board have focused your efforts and energies on books and supposed dangers to students that may be written on the pages in between. I suggest, again, that your efforts would probably better be spent in other ways. We have seventy open positions in this district. Tonight, four members of this board told a group of our students, our staff, and their families that they do not matter, that they are too dangerous to be read about, to be learned about, to be represented in our district. To those students, I say, you do matter. You value, you are valued, and you are loved, and we will continue to fight for you. The irony of a statement like this during the holiday season of peace, love, and goodwill is not lost on many of us. In closing, I too would like to reference a book that is likely to be challenged based on the perimeter set forth tonight. Whoever claims to love God yet hates their brother or sister is a liar. For whoever does not love their brother or sister cannot love God, whom he does not know and he does not see. Have a great break.
Mac Alley? Alley, Mac?
Allen. Mac Allen.
Oh, Allen, yeah.
Sorry, my handwriting's...
Well, I thought Jake wrote that. I could understand that.
It's true.
My name is Mac Allen, and I'm currently a senior attending Leavenworth High School. In the eyes of a student and a lifelong learner, today marks a dark moment in our history, a dark moment in our district and our country's history. I would like anyone in this room or elsewhere to remember any point in history where book bans were followed by any positive change in society. The banning of books constantly precedes discrimination, hatred, and violence. When the representation of a certain group is taken out of the media, especially the media of students, it is a very simple and easy task to other that group. Starting in May of 1933, towns across Germany participated in book burnings. Over 25,000 books were destroyed. These included world-renowned scientists such as Albert Einstein and Sigmund Freud, those that we still learn of today. These included poets like Ernest Hemingway that we read in our English classes. All the while, they were supporting the Nazi salute. Book burnings led to a widespread media blackout of anti-German materials, and this was considered a success by the Nazi party. We all know why this violent group destroyed invaluable knowledge to erase and eliminate an entire community. This leads me to the question, why do we wish to ban books? And which books are being targeted? The answer is obvious, at least it's obvious to me. Any book that represents a person of a minority. Many constituents may not understand, but all three books that are in the process of being challenged in this district right now involve LGBTQ characters and/or themes. Two of the three directly involve transgender people. It's almost as if there's a trend. I can see it. Can you? Overall, as a transgender student within this district, I feel utterly disappointed and let down by our elected leaders. What does this desk over here mean to all of you? A child that depends on student-first decisions sits in this desk every day. I sit in this desk every day, seven hours a day, five days a week. I hope that you all realize tonight that you are on the wrong side of our school's history...
Fifteen seconds.
...and our country's history. Thank you.
Randy Bond?
To say that I'm disappointed in the way certain members of this board voted is putting it mildly. By passing IF, you just told an entire group of pioneers that they don't count, that they don't matter, that they don't deserve representation. By being so restrictive in this policy, you've now opened up a whole new can of worms and new challenges. You just made so many teachers and students' lives harder. You failed our students and their families tonight.
Okay. My favorite subject, number 18.3, board member comment. Let's start Mr. Powell.
Justice, it's been an honor to serve the district. And while we have disagreements, it doesn't mean that ultimately we don't care for our kids. I wish the new board the best in the upcoming year. We have a great school district. We've got a long way to go. There's a lot of things that, just like any other school district in Kansas and in the Midwest, but what I am confident in is that you guys are going to meet those challenges, starting with, you know, Lawson when we initiated it, and the other initiatives that we've talked about, to get the educational value of our kids to where it needs to be, to give them a competitive edge, and other things. So I appreciate having served with each of you, and I wish you the best in your next terms.
Price?
So it is the end of the semester. For all of those of you who are staying local or traveling, please be safe. We want to see you back in the new year. Take this time to rest, new Jane and Aunt, get ready for next semester, because it will just go very, very quickly. I have a senior, and I just know that graduation may be months away, but in my head, it's your very next week. Winter sports, just kicked off. Please come out and see our pioneers. They need your support. I love cheering for basketball, albeit all the games I can either play. But this week, I'm going to steal some thunder as well. The band concert is tomorrow night at 7:00. Please, I know I've been practicing, and they are amazing. I can't wait. And then Wednesday night, once again, the magic of Main Street. A very big shout-out to the Education Foundation for supporting all the things our kids do. Support is unwidowed. Next week, and all of our kids are taking exams, finals. Good luck. Do it. Just breathe, you'll be fine. I want to extend a congratulations to all of our, excuse me, December graduates. No, it's not an easy thing to do, and so well done. And I want to extend thank you to Tom and to Mike. Thank you for your time on serving on the board. And Mike, thank you for giving my sounding board and my vice for two years. It was not easy. You had put up with some pressure, so thank you.
Easy.
And also to Dr. Roth, I know you're not here tonight, but thank you for everything you've done for the district in setting us on a path to even better places. And so, once again, thank you, everyone. Go Pioneers.
Ms. Reed?
Ms. Reed, okay. I, once again, let me find my notes. Agree with Mr. Price on the point of focusing on, I believe he stated, educational outcomes. And I am excited to do that with the new board, and I want to welcome Karen Overby. I'm very excited about that, and am very glad that people voted for her, and I'm excited for the next year.
Mr. Goodman?
I just want to make sure everybody has a Merry Christmas. Wish you all a Merry Christmas. Be safe out there. I wish the board well. I'm glad to have this opportunity to serve, to do my part in the community. I wish you the best of luck with all of the challenges and the triumphs that lie ahead. Like to thank Dr. Roth for the entire eight years that I was able to work with him. He was great to work with, and I think he helped the district out quite a bit. Dr. Adams, I see a lot of him in you, a lot of the good parts. I, the short time that we've been working together, I've been impressed with the work that you've done. I hope that continues, and I wish you the best of luck in everything you do here. I'm excited for our school district. I've still got one more to go, so I look forward to seeing how things turn out in that regard. And with that, go Pioneers. Have a good evening.
Ms. Murphy?
Oh, well, first I want to say thank you to Mr. Powell and Mr. Goodman. I worked with you, Mr. Powell, for four years, you, Mr. Goodman, for six. I've learned a lot from your vote and experiences, and I appreciate your service. I know that I have to buy a lot of clear all from service. I want to thank Dr. Roth for the last six years, I mean, nine years. Thank you for the nine years, but the six years that I've worked with you, I'm sure we'll get a chance to speak to you personally next week. You will be missed, but I'm with hopes that the district is in good hands and that we navigate everything that we need to as we move forward on all this. And I want everybody to have a safe holiday, and I would like people to also understand that you may think you know someone, but you really don't. But we just don't air out everything in our house that's to other individuals to do so.
in everything you do here. I'm excited for our school district. I've still got one more to go. So I look forward to seeing how things turn out in that regard. And with that, go Pioneers. Have a good evening.
Ms. Murphy?
Oh, well, first, I want to say thank you to Mr. Powell and Mr. Goodman. I worked with you, Mr. Powell, for four years. You, Mr. Goodman, for six. I've learned a lot from both and experiences. And I appreciate your service. I know that I have to buy a lot of Clarol from service. I want to thank Dr. Roth for the last six years... I mean, nine years. Thank you for the nine years. But the six years that I've worked with you, I'm sure we'll get a chance to speak to you personally next week. You will be missed. But I'm with hopes that the district is in good hands and that we navigate everything that we need to as we move forward on all this. And I want everybody to have a safe holiday. And I would like people to also understand that you may think you know someone, but you really don't. But we just don't air out everything in our house that's to other individuals to do so. So I know far more than you could ever hoped that I know. And Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday, and Happy Just Night of Monica.
Ms. Rose?
I want to thank Mr. Goodman for his years of service. I appreciate serving with you, sir. And Mr. Powell, I... We have not agreed on a lot of things, but I have greatly appreciated the way that you are able to articulate why you think the things that you do. And I think that is going to be missed on the board greatly. Thank you for that. I am disappointed in the decision that was made tonight. I hope that is known by my vote. But we are a board, and we will move forward. I echo everything that everyone else has said about being safe. Enjoy your holidays, kids. Do your best on these finals. You're not going to die if you don't pass. It's going to be fine. So you are... It's... Do your best. Don't stress. It's going to be fine. To our staff, thank you. Please take time over the holidays to rejuvenate, reset, recharge. These kids need you. I appreciate you. Thank you very much. Dr. Roth, I've already told you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Dr. Adams, I hope you accept our extension. I appreciate the work that you've done so far. I look forward to continue working with you in the future. You've got me for another four years. I hope you can have me. I can have you for as long as you're willing to stay. And let's continue to do good work.
Thank you.
John, Mike, you know, you can drop out and then come back. I've done that. So sometimes you learn not doing things out there. But no, I appreciate both of you guys. One thing I want to say first, so Brenda won't get mad at me. You got to sign the... What is that thing?
The resolution.
Resolution. Make sure you sign that. And I guess it's going to be... You got the blue pen? All right. So I was going to go out to Warren today, but my wife decided to be the Uber person. So she indicated that she was pleasantly surprised. It went fairly well. There was a few glitches, but there's always glitches. We do some things like that. But I think overall it'll work out once everybody gets on board. But I'm just... I'm still concerned about kids running across streets. But I had a crazy idea about building some big bridges over all areas. But people think things like that are crazy, but might save somebody from getting killed. But no, I'm happy with the way things go. I'm glad we all got together for the most part to spin Dr. Adams' contract. I think he's going to be a boon to this community. And people don't realize, to me, this position is probably one of the most important positions in the community. And all of our support should be behind him. And I think we're going to do great things in the future. I've got some crazy ideas. I think I might fly one of these days before I get off. But anyway, y'all have a Merry Christmas.
May I have an alibi?
Uh, when I'm done, yeah.
Okay.
I'm done.
Brian? Thank you. It's been a pleasure. You've been a lifesaver.